Good evening. My name is Cherie Johnson. I'm the Public Information Officer for Prince George's County Public Schools. Welcome and thank you for coming tonight. We're about to start our news conference to discuss some of the incidents that have happened to Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School. I have a number of speakers behind us here, and we're going to talk a little bit about what's going on and how we're moving forward. And to begin, I would like to introduce the Prince George's County Executive, County Executive, Mr. Ruchern Baker.
Thank you. Good evening. The terrible situation that hit us all very hard here in Prince George's County. This is a painful situation for the county. To think a person that we entrusted would deliver everlasting harm to our young people, our babies. It breaks our hearts in Prince George's County. As a parent of three, I'm particularly taking this hard, as I'm sure most parents are out there. We can only imagine what would happen with our precious children if we have sent to our school and other places in the county, this terrible act. Because every child in this county is our baby. And it is our job, it is my job, to protect them from predators like the one that we've arrested. I'm asking all Prince Georgians to keep these children and their family in your prayers during this unbelievable time. Our children are precious, and we are working diligently to provide them the necessary support. The one thing I want to make clear is that this is an ongoing investigation. We're going to be forthcoming with information tonight, but this investigation doesn't stop with this arrest. It doesn't stop with the prosecution of this individual. So we're going to make sure, and we're going to make sure when we answer questions tonight, that it doesn't jeopardize this ongoing investigation. What I want the people of Prince George's County to know is that their government will use every resource to not only follow this case to where it leads, but also to provide the type of support for the families of this tragedy. Every thing that we have in our power will be at the disposal to use in this situation. I've asked our police department, working with the FBI, working with our state's attorney, and the rest of our government to do everything that we can. Our school system is taking the necessary steps, which you were here tonight. But I want you to know that we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that this type of situation doesn't happen again. We're going to look at everything. Everything. That is why I'm pleased to have our school board chair, Dr. Eubanks, come up here and talk to you about the things that we have been doing. Dr. Eubanks?
Thank you, County Executive Baker. On behalf of the Prince George's County Board of Education, I want to deliver brief remarks to deliver message to the citizens and parents of Prince George's County. We know as the elected and appointed representatives of the citizens of this great county, we too, our parents, most board members like myself, have children in the public school system. We are brothers and parents and uncles and grandchildren of children in the public school system. We know that when we send our children to school every day, we do it to make sure they get a world-class education and that the opportunities available in this great nation and great world become available to them. We send them to school and we expect them to be safe. In fact, for far too many of our students, school is a safe haven away from so many of the other violence that is perpetrated throughout our society. So when our safe haven is violated, and it is done so in such a vile and painful way, we are deeply disturbed. We are ever more committed and vigilant to working to make sure that every one of the 129,000 young people who enter our doors each day leaves safely and unharmed. We will commit to many things, but I will point to three. First, as mentioned, we will fully and 100% cooperate with law enforcement. Any and everything that is available for us in Prince George's County Public Schools will be available to law enforcement officials in this important investigation. Second, we will remain committed to the families and students who've been victimized by this vile incidents until they are fully recovered, no matter how long it takes. And third, we will fully investigate internally whether the many policies, programs, or safeguards that we put in place were properly implemented, and whether we need to redouble our efforts with new policies, safeguards, and procedures to make sure that we minimize the risk of such heinous acts happening again in the future. I'm going to turn the floor over to our CEO, Dr. Maxwell, who will give more details about the steps that we're taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Thank you all for being here. I have a few brief remarks as well, and after this is all over, we'll be available for questions. First, let me say, as a father, a grandfather, and an educator that has dedicated my entire life to the education and safety of students all across the state of Maryland, my heart goes out to the families and victims at Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School in Prince George's County and the entire Glen Arden community. I, like many of you, were shocked, appalled, disgusted, and disheartened by the allegations that a former Prince George's County Public School employee harmed students and especially vulnerable children. I want to be very clear that this district is dedicating every resource we have available to help our students, families, and staff. Tonight, I will outline for you the steps we are taking to support Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School and outline how we will foster a safe and secure environment for all children in Prince George's County. Prince George's County Public Schools has and will continue to fully cooperate with our law enforcement partners throughout the duration of this investigation. I want to publicly thank Chief Stewinski, Major Brewer, the State's Attorney, Ms. Alsobrooks, and County Executive Baker for their support and consistent communication as the investigation into these heinous allegations continue. As soon as the allegations were confirmed and the arrest was made, we immediately took steps to assist the students and families. First, there was a meeting with parents at Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School, and we have provided counseling and psychological support for students and families upon request. We will continue to keep this support in place as long as it is needed at the school. Second, we reviewed our administrative procedures and policies on abuse and suspicious activity with the entire staff at Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School. Third, we have scheduled a parent meeting for Thursday at 6:30 PM at Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School to outline additional measures we'll take as a school system to address the safety and security of students. In this meeting, many of the representatives from some of the agencies here tonight will also be present to report on resources available and the status of the investigation. This situation has shown us that what we are doing at Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School to support students and families is necessary for our entire Prince George's County Public School community. Therefore, we have established a parent and student safety hotline. The hotline will be available for anyone to report suspicious or questionable behavior. Each and every call will be taken seriously and investigated. The number for the parent and student safety hotline is 301-618-8342. Once again, 301-618-8342. The line will be open for calls beginning tomorrow morning. Our professional school counselors will conduct classroom guidance lessons for all students, which will include differences between appropriate and inappropriate physical contact, personal body safety rules and when to use them, and how to identify trusted adults to whom they can report when they feel unsafe. This evening, at the conclusion of this, I'll be sending a directive reinforcing to all principals that they must meet with all school-based personnel to review the August 2015 training and the contents of the October 2015 memorandum that we sent to all employees. The training and memorandum contains the process and procedures required for reporting suspicious behavior. During our already scheduled systemic principals meeting next week, our Office of General Counsel will also review all of the laws, policies, and procedures related to our employees' obligation to report suspicious behavior. Finally, I am immediately convening a task force of internal and external partners to review our current policies and procedures and identify areas of immediate improvement that are possible. We will also consult with national experts in this field to ensure that the task force recommendations are aligned with best practices from across the country. As stated earlier, this district will use all of its resources possible to foster a safe and supportive environment for all students and families. It goes without saying that these type of acts are intolerable and wholly unacceptable. I'll now ask Chief Hank Stewinski to update you on the criminal investigation.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. I'd like to begin by giving you a brief overview. Monday, we convened a conference call with the impacted jurisdictions and concerns. Tonight with us is Chief O'Donnell from the Glen Arden Police Department, Chief Stanley Johnson of the Maryland Park Police, and with us also in spirit certainly are members of the Baltimore Field Office of the FBI, who were tragically called away to assist our colleagues in Harford County this evening. As it stands now, there aren't dramatic new developments to reveal to you. What I can say is that we have identified seven victims. There are 11 in the aggregate, but seven of them were abused by this individual directly. We've interviewed over 18 children and more than two dozen families. That's being done, as I discussed on Monday, by a collaborative task force comprised of members of the agencies I've just spoken about, Prince George's County Police detectives, and members of the Federal Bureau of Investigation. In addition to special agents of the FBI, I would like to point out that the FBI has drawn resources from around the nation in order to aid the victims. At this point, we have begun to charge additional counts against this individual, but the focus of the Prince George's County Police Department and our colleagues in this investigation is on the additional victims. So we're looking to identify those children who have been victimized, so that we can reach out to them through the county's social services, through the school system, and provide them with the support that they need to deal with this terrible, terrible crime. Beyond that, I would just like to say that the men and women of the Prince George's County Police Department have worked tirelessly for the second time in as many weeks on a heinous crime involving a child. I'm very proud of them, and I thank them for their good work. The final partner in this, key partner in this, is our state's attorney, Ms. Angela Alsobrooks, who both she and her staff have been integrally involved since the very beginning. And at this point, it's my privilege to introduce her for some remarks.
Good evening. I just want to begin by first, not only as the state's attorney, but as a mother and a lifelong resident of this community, express my support and concern for all of the families and the children who have been impacted by these crimes. I also want to express my very deep and profound disappointment at the crimes that occurred at the Judge Silvania Woods Elementary School. I have said it before, and I will continue to say it until I am blue in the face, that we have a very sacred obligation to the children of this community to protect them, to educate them, to do everything that we can to make sure that they have lives that are productive. And these kids, in this case, did not receive that protection. I believe that I share the concern and share the anger of all of the parents in this community who are involved, that we really should have done better and we could have done, we should have done better by these children. They deserve better than they received. My office will continue to work with the police department and all of our law enforcement partners. I have to say that you've heard from Chief Stewinski, this department is second to none. I don't just say that because I work with them. It is absolutely the truth. They are second to none. We will continue to investigate this case. We will go as far as it leads us. We will work with the FBI as well. I want to say to everyone watching and listening that we need witnesses in this case, that there is any person who has any information whatsoever about any of these crimes, to please come forward and share what you know. It is going to be that information that will help us to continue to build a strong case that will allow us to hold responsible this person and any person who had a duty to protect these children and failed to do so. I want to thank as well all of the partners who are standing with me tonight. I thank the county executive. I want to thank as well our schools chief. I want to thank all of the folks who are standing with us. We'll continue to do our best to make sure that going forward, this never happens in our community again. I've had conversations with CEO Maxwell. We are going to continue those conversations, offering our help and support and training regarding sexual assault and recognizing the signs of child sexual assault in our schools. We'll continue to offer that training. It's on the table. We're going to continue to work to make sure that everyone is equipped to recognize these signs and to do what we can for these children. Again, I can't stress it enough, our obligation to these children and their families is sacred. We take it as such. We won't stop until we not only hold this individual and any individual accountable, but again, we're going to make sure that this crime can never happen again in our school systems. Thank you.
Just one thing before we take questions coming up. I just want to recognize that we have all of our law enforcement here. Our sheriff is here, so I want to thank Sheriff Melvin Hy for being here. This is a Prince George's family, and we're all working together to make sure that we thoroughly investigate this. Come on up.
Okay, we would now like to open it up for questions.
Question for Ms. Alsobrooks, please begin with the microphone so they can get your answer. You mentioned that the people that should have been protecting the children, if there were a situation in which people at the school who weren't a custodial situation, officials, teachers, had concerns about this teacher and did not bring them forward, could they conceivably face charges?
Absolutely. Absolutely, they could. And again, we're early in the investigation. We don't know yet that that is the case, and that's why we say we will go as far as our investigation leads us, and we'll take action based on what we learn.
I'm not confused for anyone. And here's the question all parents have right now, is where does this system fail in that, you know, how does this even happen for so long and involve so many of us?
Let me have Dr. Maxwell come up. One of the things that this investigation is going to look at everything. That's why I said it doesn't end with, as the state's attorney said, it doesn't end with the arrest of the young man. It looks at the school system. It looks at all of us, because it didn't just happen, the violation on our school property. There is violation that happened in one of our municipalities, and we don't know if it happened anywhere else. So this is an ongoing investigation, and in that, we're going to find out where the breakdowns are and correct those. But the immediate reaction, I think, is what Dr. Maxwell talked about in his opening statement. I'll let him talk about that some more.
I think the way to answer the question is that we don't have all the answers yet. That's what the investigation is going to do. At this time, the police department, the FBI, and the other organizations that are involved in this investigation, the state's attorney's office, are the lead agencies on this. When they're finished with their investigation, then we will do our personnel review. In the meantime, we're taking the steps that we know are appropriate to reinforce the messages that we've already delivered on the reporting of suspected or suspicious activity, and it may or may not turn out to be. I mean, again, we're getting some information from the investigation, and other people are asking questions because they're hearing some of the same things. But until the investigation is concluded, I can't summarily say that somebody did or didn't. I will say that, you know, people who are engaged in activities they shouldn't be in are not always and not usually very blatant about it. They do things to cover up what they're doing, and we need to make sure that when the chief and the FBI, our partners at the police department, state's attorney are finished, that we all learn the answer to the question that you just asked. It's an excellent question. And when we have the answer, as the county executive said at the beginning in the opening statement, we'll be as transparent as bad as we can be. But until the investigation is complete, I don't think that we can really tell you what breakdowns there were or were not.
Dr. Maxwell, you didn't mention that the principal is, but at least temporarily removed from the school administratively. Why did you take that action? There's certainly allegations that are being made now by the parent of one of the children that the principal was informed and did not. Can you speak directly about that?
So I can say that we removed the principal out of an abundance of caution when people say things to us. We don't necessarily have to wait until the entire, you know, answer's out. We can, you know, take proactive steps. That was done before the reports that we're hearing about something being filed today, a complaint being filed. To my knowledge, and I talked with my general counsel 30 minutes ago, we've not been served with that document that you're referring to. It's not to say it hasn't happened. I'm only saying we haven't seen it, we haven't reviewed it, we can't comment on it. But, you know, we, out of an abundance of caution, we took that step, Brad.
How troubled are you by this notion that it was really, the allegation is that there's a two-step deny, that there was this common knowledge that something was in foot in the school and no action was taken, and then that this family came to the principal, showed pictures, and the principal said, instead of calling the police right away, said, "Come back tomorrow for a meeting."
So I'm not going to comment on a lawsuit that was maybe a complaint that was filed today, nor do I have any direct knowledge of what you're talking about. But I am troubled by the allegations that are floating around, and I want answers as much as everybody else wants answers to it, and we will certainly, you know, be as transparent as possible, Brad, in the answers to those questions. And if people took information and didn't do what they were supposed to by law with it, as the state's attorney has said, I concur 100%. If our employees didn't do what they were supposed to do, then they should be held accountable for that. Beyond that, I can't really say anything more on it.
Dr. Maxwell, how did he spend so much time with these children?
I can't answer that question right now. Again, that's part of the investigation as well. He was, for a period of time, a dedicated aide, assigned to work with children. That was his role in the school system. The amount of time, disproportionate or not, I don't have an answer to that question. It's part of what we're looking at. It's part of what the police department is looking at. It's part of what everybody's looking at.
Hey, you want to come in? I mean, some of the questions you're asking about the investigation, right now, our police department, along with the FBI and social services, or someone from there, is interviewing everyone. So if you want to speak to where we are, I may close them.
Those interviews have been going on since last week. As I said, Monday, this individual was in custody within 18 hours of us realizing that this had occurred. We continue to carry out those interviews, again, with the victims, both FBI agents and Prince George's County Police detectives, as well as with crisis response, both from the county and from the FBI. What I'll conclude with is this. The questions that you're asking, we are endeavoring and working tirelessly to answer for this community and for the schools. And in furtherance of that, I'll again offer you this. Two phone numbers, please. That is the Criminal Investigations Division of the Prince George's County Police. Or our partners can be reached at the Federal Bureau of Investigation at 1-800-CALL-FBI. That's 1-800-CALL-FBI.
Dr. Maxwell, we know police say they started investigating Caraway on Thursday. They say they arrested him within 24 hours. We heard from them on Monday. Why is this the first time that the public is seeing and hearing from someone within the school system? I know Channel 9 and others have requested interviews, and so far, those have been turned down. The statement that we received and the letter parents received on Monday seem to be very similar. How come there hasn't seemed to be a whole lot of information coming from your department? And when did you first learn about this arrest?
So we had a first indication that there was an arrest early on Saturday morning. Our first responsibility is to the children and the families at the school, and so our first time was spent doing a number of things. We deployed some additional staff to the school on Monday. We organized a crisis team and counselors and personnel to meet with parents on Tuesday morning as this became public. I participated on Monday in a conference call with our law enforcement partners and others regarding this, and as part of that conversation, we mapped out, you know, how we would be proceeding through the week. Our initial statement was to acknowledge that we were aware, that we had a concern, but our immediate and foremost need is to make sure that we're taking the steps to run the school system. That's our job.
How many parents were at that impromptu meeting with administrators on Monday?
My understanding is there were about 30 parents there, and about 20 students spoke to counselors and psychologists on Tuesday.
So everyone else, I assume, was sent home with the letter that we got a copy of, which, as I mentioned, seemed to be a little more extra than what we got as the media, which was just to say someone was arrested, we're working with law enforcement, and here's a number you can call. As a parent, when you saw that letter, do you think that was adequate information for you guys to provide to all the other parents who couldn't attend that meeting?
So, again, we've established a parent meeting for Thursday night. We can only report to parents on information that we have at the time. And again, there was a briefing on Monday afternoon that we had with multiple agencies, including the school system involved in that, and I can, again, I think that parents are going to continue to receive information, but we wanted to get something out quickly. You have to understand there's also a time situation, and that is that, you know, the school opens very early in the morning, and it closes, I think, at 1:15 or so in the afternoon. And so there's a time element to get things completed by the time schools close, when they're that early. So as we're receiving the information, there is a little bit of a turnaround. It doesn't happen instantaneously.
Let me just say this. We talked to Dr. Maxwell's office and the school office about this. One of the things we're going to look at, and he's agreed to it, is the procedures that were taking place in this case, not just in former Savania Woods School, but all of the schools throughout Prince George's County. The reason that we wanted to have this press conference tonight is to let the citizen residents of Prince George's County know not just the police, the school system's response, but the county's response. And that is, we're going to look at everything. As the state's attorney's office said, state's attorney said, "This investigation is ongoing. The information is not just from the police side, but it's also how we conduct in our schools, but also what tools we offer to those parents going forward." So we're looking at everything, and we're going to be as transparent as we can without jeopardizing, without jeopardizing an ongoing investigation, because it goes beyond just this individual that we have here. We want to make sure that we, one, be able to provide all the resources to the victims and their families, but also to make sure if there's anyone else involved in this, that we bring them to justice. I don't know if that's...
Can you clarify, number of victims? Is it seven additional or seven instead of 10? Do you have the time to answer these?
Right now, there are 11 victims. Seven of them are victims of the individual, Mr. Caraway, directly. The others are victimized through his activities, but not directly by him. And in addition, as I said, we've interviewed more than 18 children, over two dozen families. And again, going back to my prior remarks when I offered the phone numbers, these are very troubling issues to discuss. Some parents may have concerns about how you begin that conversation. I've done this work, and I know how difficult it is. We have trained professionals who can help you through that process. So if that's your concern, make that phone call and allow us to help you through that. Again, at the Criminal Investigations Division, 301-772-4930, or to the FBI at 1-800-CALL-FBI.
We were told that Caraway worked at another school as a school secretary, Glen Arden Woods. Is there anything to suggest that any sort of of these activities occurred on those school grounds or while he was working at that school? I think it was 2013 to 2014.
We haven't ruled it out, but we don't have any information that that's the case at this point.
Certainly, there could be Jake Johnson. Do you believe there may be another one? Or is that...
Certainly, there's the potential for that to be the case. And as I said earlier, our concern is identifying all of the children harmed by this so that we can provide them with help. That's where analysis of this individual's phones, this individual's methods, and the places that he frequented is so important. And again, that's why we're asking the community to reach out with information, but also know that since this began almost a week ago now, our detectives, our collaborators from Glen Arden and the Park Police and the FBI have been working around the clock to develop that. Again, part of our obligation is to come to the community and provide some explanation as to how this happened, and that's what we're working on. And Dr. Maxwell has been a tremendous partner in that, making all the resources of the school system available to us. At the end of this, I'm confident we'll have an answer for the community, and we'll be able to correct this situation.
This is for Dr. Maxwell. You said that there was an arrest on Saturday, but then we were told the letter didn't go out until a few days later.
Only that the message... Because we were trying to gather additional information and send out appropriate information. Again, the first conversations, we got an email on Saturday. We didn't have a conference call until Monday afternoon. And so again, there's a time issue when you're trying to have a number of people collaborating with one another. It doesn't happen in an hour or so.
One last question, yes? No, what we said to the parents and to the family is that, one, we're providing services to those families, two, to all Prince George's parents. I'm a parent here in Prince George's County. This is devastating. This is unacceptable. But we have to make sure, one, that we not only bring this individual to justice, but anybody else connected with this, and that we find every victim out there. We know, as the police chief said, that there are 11, but we have to make sure, and we're going to do everything we can, we're going to turn over every stone, to make sure we know every victim out there and every victim's family, and stay with those families. It doesn't end today, but we also want to make sure if there's anybody else connected with this individual, that we bring that person to justice, and that if there is a breakdown in the system, that we not only fix it, but we make sure those people are held responsible. That's what we say to parents, that when you send your babies, our babies, to our school system, it is our job to make sure that they're safe. We're going to do that. And this is to tell the people of Prince George's County that we are putting every resources we have to make sure that happens, and we're going to be as transparent as possible without jeopardizing. This is too important. Thank you very much.
So much for coming. If you have any other questions, I'll be right here if you have.